Alrighty, I wanted to say good evening to everyone. At this point, I'd like to report from the study session that we had a motion passed, 4-1, authorizing the mayor to send a letter to account for his land landscaping. So the vote was, the deciding vote was Councilmember Monica Garcia. At this point, I'd like to open up the Ballpark City Council regular meeting. Today is July the 19th, 2017, at a time of 7:25. So at this point, I'm going to have Pastor Jackson lead us in an invocation by the flag group. So I will ask all those that are able to stand to please be so. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, you started something that I would like to continue with Pastor Flores.
Oh, I didn't see Pastor Flores, sorry about that.
Both, with us both doing the invocation. Heavenly Father, would just come before you right now, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we praise you and thank you. We thank you for Ballpark, Lord, and we thank you for the city council and all those that are working along with the mayor to make the city a great city. And we thank you, Lord, for our police department, and, Lord, that you will give both police department wisdom and knowledge and understanding in how to handle every situation that comes before them in a good manner, Lord, that it would not put a shame upon the city. And also, Lord God, there are many decisions to be made in a city for our mayor and city council to do, but to say to acknowledge you in all of our ways, and you would direct our path, and that's what we need, your divine direction, from our school district, Lord God, to our businesses, Lord God, to just the home of those that are dwelling here in Ballpark, to make the city a great city, and we thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we'll face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We salute you for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual and community. Thank you, thank you very much. Clark, I want to hold on behalf of a long time, Chief Taylor, Kevin Kirkman, what year was he hired?
He started early years, he worked for us about 27 years.
Twenty seven years, so back in...
He worked about 27 years, he had a range of different positions that he was in. He started off as a patrol officer. At one point, he was in our Department of Security.
I remember that.
He also went back to traffic, he was a motor officer. He worked on a professional standard, eventually went to the detective bureau as a sergeant. He left us a few years ago to hit retirement. In fact, we hired him on several occasions to be back on the police officers list. Unfortunately, he came down with various diseases and passed away.
And just want, I just want to say about Kevin Kirkman, that he's the principal individual that had an opportunity to be back in 1992. Interesting, I had been in prior to 1992, 1986, my dad had just bought a brand new vehicle, 1986 Chevrolet Prius, fully loaded, some of it, the whole works. And I remember there was a chase that was happening right on Ballpark Boulevard, it was parked right on Ballpark Boulevard in Ramona, and see the Ballpark being chasing this vehicle, and I remember telling myself, this guy is going to end up getting caught. Sure enough, as I was traveling north on Ballpark Boulevard, crossing Clark Street, he people that ran a car that my dad had just bought. And Kevin Kirkman, actually, I spun around three times, Kevin Kirkman was the one that came over to find out if it was okay, pull me out of that vehicle, of course, I was in shock, didn't have a cell phone at the time because they weren't that popular, used a phone right across the street, and he assists me with that, he walked me over to the house, and I was really shaken up because that car was total. Called my dad, and he said, "How'd you like the car, was it great, smooth?" Well, of course, he found out the vehicle was total. But Kevin Kirkman was the police officer that had the experience at that specific time. But obviously, of course, he chose not to have anything, and I think that sounds like Kevin Kirkman, and our deepest condolences goes out to his wife, Renee, who also was part of the Ballpark Police Department for many, many years, and our deepest condolences out to all of his family on behalf of the city of Ballpark, we forward a letter.
Just want to say thank you for acknowledging me.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, and your deepest condolences, I'm very sorry, very sorry to hear about this, Cassie. But I'd also like to close on behalf of a five-year-old, Aramaz, I'm Agent Junior, and tonight is the vigil for this five-year-old who was just, was murdered by his father so tragically. And I want to give our condolences to the Estevas family, who are here in front of Ballpark, Ana Estevas being the mother of this young child, and grew up just down the street from me. So I want to give our condolences to the Estevas family, give our support in any way that we can, and it's just, it's just so sad to, to know that this could happen, and especially, you know, somebody from our community. I encourage that you have the time this evening to go out to our brain and our Arcadia and be part of the vigil to show your support.
Yeah, just what I also mentioned, that I believe she is also graduated from Ballpark High School, so she was very well-known throughout the community, and so our deepest condolences goes out to this family for this tragedy.
Alredia?
Yes, Councilmember Cruz.
I would also like to close on behalf of Nancy Maderos, the 19-year-old girl who was killed at the hotel here in Ballpark. Our condolences to her family and to everyone, and also our officers who have been handling that very, very terrible tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I'll close on behalf of Silver Hernandez, a good friend, her mom, Ballpark resident, by name Maria Trajo Rodriguez Moreno, passed away last week, so our condolences goes out to the family members. Yes. Alright, so at this point, just want to remind you, we will open currently the finance and the housing authority together, and our we got some that were also required by California State law, which is, is to announce that required by government code section 5495.2.3, members of the city council are also members of the board of directors of the housing authority and finance authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 pertaining to housing authority and $50 pertaining to the finance authority meeting. Alright, so no further questions, at this point, I will ask our city treasurer, Maria Montez, if she could please take your call.
May I be included, may I be listened to, when I'm just a little here in the... Councilmember Saka, here. Councilmember Monica Garcia, here. Councilmember President Tejado.
President.
May I be present?
Present. Alright, thank you very much. At this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to excuse also our city clerk, Alejandro Avila.
I'll second.
That's my motion, second. Any objections, see now, so no. Alright, so at this point, we're going over to the presentations, and the first one that I have will be the oath of office to our newly hired Gustavo Romo, the Community Developing Committee. Thank you for taking the position, Gustavo, we're looking forward, and I know that you're an innovative and a visionary, and we're looking for you in that perspective, and as well, let the community know that he is a product of the city of Ballpark, graduated from service to high school, what year?
1987.
1987, alright, so 1987, so thank you for being a part, and of course, a dream for you to work for the city that provided to you the opportunity and the education and the foresight. So if you come on up here, we'll do the swearing ceremony. Hey, where's the camera at today? Manny, come here, I'm sitting here. Call you up. Alright, Mr. Stubble, I don't have to wear my glasses, but open. Alright, Mr. Stubble, I don't have to wear my glasses, but open. Yes, come on up, yes, oh yeah, let's bring his family up here, absolutely, got my mother, Yes, come on up, yes, oh yeah, let's bring his family up here, absolutely, got my mother, Maria, oh yeah, let's bring her here. Maria, oh yeah, let's bring her up here. Yes. Don't pack so much. Yes. Yes, oh, yeah, yes. 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 Raise up your, your right hand, right, right hand, ready, okay. Alright, mention your name.
I, Gustavo Romo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well be faithful to this.
And that I will well be faithful.
This charge of duties.
This charge of duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, brother. Let's get our phones up.
Yeah, a little bit, little bit to your left.
Yeah.
Okay, we go that way. Okay, count three.
Yeah. One, two.
And there are a few cameras.
Yeah.
And next one.
Uh, try that. There you go.
There we go, there we go. There we go. We are doing the next one, last one.
No, Amy doesn't need to be in the picture. Amy's fine back here.
Last one, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Something I want to, want to, real quick, something that I wanted to say before, this past Monday, so that everyone knows, my brother, my youngest brother was arrested by the Ballpark Police Department, brought to the station, then released, so I just want to put that on the record. Alright, thank you. Alright, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the...
What's the question?
Okay, oh yeah, Captain Doug Partnow, come on up.
For the record, I did not arrest the mayor's brother.
Alrighty, okay, so let me tell, I need my glasses, you don't have glasses. Okay, yo, I got my glasses, it reads, Captain Doug Partnow, Ballpark Police Department, in recognition of your exemplary service as chief of police, April 20th, 2017 through May 30th, 2017. Thank you for the dedication and leadership you provided to your, to your department, colleagues, and entire city. Congratulations for a great job, well done. Thank you, chief. Okay, a little bit tighter. Okay, count three, one, two, and hold it. Okay, next one. Oh yeah, yes, oh, oh, okay, alright.
Okay, count three, one, two. Ballos at tacor nazo. Okay, here we go, last one. And one more with the city camera. Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Sir, Manny?
Yes, sir.
Can you do one more picture proof?
Yeah. Okay.
Mayor, can you guys take a picture when I say something?
Sure, absolutely.
Just want to say one thing, thank you, because, you know, you took over a very difficult time, and you was very responsive, and thank you for your work, and you're a tremendous doctor, and you have appropriate time, and so we thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go with you.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry about that.
Real quick, I just wanted to thank the city staff, city manager, and city council for giving me the opportunity, and also for the amazing police department staff for making me look good and making it an easy task. Thank you.
Alright, the next presentation by Community Energy Choice. So at this point, who's doing the presentation? Oh, okay.
So, assuming objects for letting me...
Alright, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Chafin, I'm the president of Connor Energy, and thank you Mayor Lozano, the city council, city manager, and city staff for having me this evening. Tonight, I'm joining you...
As always, our DC one of the...
Joe.
...is called...
Just a minute. Just hold it, hold it up. You got it, thank you. So just to be myself, I'm Michael Chafin, the president of Connor Energy, and joining you tonight on behalf of the California Choice Energy Authority, what I hope to share with you this evening is some information about community choice aggregation, share with you what we're doing with other cities, and some of the opportunities and benefits of community choice aggregation, how it can help the city of Ballpark, so... Just on the onset, California Choice Energy Authority, we are a joint power authority, it is a joint power authority established by the city of Lancaster, and from a general sense, the California Choice Energy Authority is a joint power authority, as the city may understand it to be, so this operates very similar to much as any other joint power authority you may be familiar with. I would say the biggest difference about how this California Choice Energy Authority operates is that we assist other cities in what we call a hybrid JPA model, to help other cities establish their CCAs. And just to, to give a benefit here, my understanding is that the city may have already received a presentation from LA County regarding its community choice aggregation, so the city might be familiar with what community choice might be, but in general, California Choice Energy Authority helps cities establish their own CCAs in what we call, again, this hybrid model. And we work, in, in just in contrast, if I were to take, say, LA County's JPA model, this would be a model where this city would be able to opt into an existing JPA, and the JPA would operate the program, and you would be one member with one vote as part of a program on a LA County basis. This hybrid model that's being offered here to the city of Ballpark would operate that we would help the city establish its own CCA, and the California Choice Energy Authority would operate the CCA on your behalf, so 100% of the net revenues would come back to the city of Ballpark, and all of the local decisions about how the program is run would all go through the city of Ballpark. Again, much different from the traditional JPA model, where you could have one vote, and your vote is aggregated with other cities as part of a larger JPA. So we do have, I did put on here that we operate a, the only operating CCA in Southern California Edison territory since 2015 was the city of Lancaster, so just to give you some benefit, Lancaster's been operating their community choice aggregation for the past two years. This year, we have seen the town of Apple Valley, which I believe was the second city to join and establish within Southern California Edison territory, and I'll share with you about how many other cities are really starting to pick up on community choice aggregation. We will, we are excited to have the cities of Pico Rivera and San Jacinto will be operating their CCAs next month, or actually about September, so about a month and a half. They've been in process for about a year, and the CCA will be assisting those cities with bringing the programs live. Again, for folks that don't know, Connor Energy, we work with a number of different cities, including the city of Ballpark, helping to build energy programs, develop energy retrofit solutions, and we do this for a number of agencies throughout California. Again, my understanding is that this council may be familiar, but I'll give a very quick overview of what a community choice aggregation is, just as maybe a bit of a pressure. So what the California Choice Energy Authority is hoping to do is assist cities build their own community choice aggregation, which is allowing this city to procure green renewable power, and then simply provide that power using SCE's Transmission and Distribution Network, and use that power to supply power for the city of Ballpark. So we're not looking to have this city become the utility company that takes over everything that Edison does, it's just one function of what Edison does. So essentially, we do partner up with Edison, Edison still sends out the bills to all the residents, the businesses, and the city, but the city would be responsible for procuring power, and again, the CCA would be the backbone or infrastructure behind you doing that. So again, that, that reference up there is the CCA delivered through the utility into the customer. I, I'm a very visual person, and I saw this next slide here, this is a sample bill from Marin Clean Energy. Now, Marin Clean Energy was the first CCA back in 2010 to establish in California. This is for PG&E, but very similar, it, it kind of gives you that visual illustration. If you look there at the yellow highlighted area, it says MCE Electric Generation Charges, that's that one line item charge. If the city of Ballpark were to establish a CCA, that one line item on SCE's bill would still, would read Ballpark Energy CCA, just that one line item. The bill, the transmission, if there was a down tree or electric line, Edison would still be responsible, they would still call Edison, they're still responsible for delivering power to the homes. So from a homeowner's perspective, they'll still get the same bill, they'll still get the same energy service that they're used to, that one line item with the generation charge of their bill would be the only difference. So again, we're just highlighting that one piece of, of the bill that the CCA would have the city become responsible for. And again, that's, this is the visual illustration for that. So by the end of 2016, it's been said there's about 300 cities in California that are looking to establish CCAs. Just for, for the council's benefit, Marin County was the first to establish a CCA back in 2010. Four years later, Sonoma County established their CCA in 2014, and then the city of Lancaster in 2015. Since then, we've seen a number of agencies, I think in April of this year, Silicon Valley, which has about 12 cities, and Santa Clara County, went live with their program, town of Apple Valley, and, and a number of cities. So again, we've, we're estimating it's at least 300 cities and counties that have, at least in some stage of developing or engaging in the CCA process. And the biggest reason, again, working with these cities is why they look at CCAs as, as a benefit, just to kind of share with some of the, the insight. The city of Lancaster, which has been operating for about the past two years, in reaching their energy goals, this one fund is now the largest fund in their cap, so when you look at their budget, it's a $40 million line item, and is by far their biggest item that the city actually does. About 10% of that fund is now their energy revenue program, so that is money that comes back to the city for them to utilize for energy retrofit services. As of today, the city's invested in clean energy, natural gas, natural gas, clean energy retrofits, underground utility improvements, LED lighting improvements as well, all of these are being funded through the CCA in Lancaster. I know the city of Pico Rivera was very excited about launching their program here in the next two months, they've been investigating this, and we've worked internally with them, and just to share with you, that program, even like for Pico Rivera, they've embraced it as their program, it is called, if you look it up, it's PRIME, P-R-I-M-E, Pico Rivera Innovative Municipal Energy, it's branded, is their program, and it is their program, and that's that hybrid JPA that the California Choice Energy Authority has, is that we help the city, it becomes your program, and we are the support for your program. So Pico Rivera said, hey, it's our program, it's PRIME, our residents will notice it's PRIME, we're going to help save them money on energy bills, and it'll become a revenue item for the city to help with their energy programs budgets. So again, as you can see, even though the last one or two years, it's gone from literally not many agencies to, we've kind of heard about it, to now LA County's looking to say, we, we want to do this. LA County's invested about $10 million to launch their program, and I think what they've done is offered this to all the LA County cities, to say you can opt in, and Phase 1, I believe, of their program is looking to be launched here, in the future with Phase 2 and Phase 3. I'll share with you a, a bit again, how we, we work it, maybe how it's a bit different. So again, some of the reasons why we see cities look to CCAs as, as an opportunity, it truly is a win-win-win. Residents, business owners, all see a drop in energy costs from what they were at SCE, across the board from the CCAs that exist in California, anywhere between 1% to 12% of an energy rate decrease on, on bills through their CCAs. So we haven't seen any of CCAs charge more than the utility companies, so instantly, residents, business owners will see a benefit. One nice aspect, we've worked with a couple agencies, we've had, then you look at this as an economic development tool, by establishing your CCA, you'll have the opportunity to adjust your own tariff. Literally, you can create, if, let's say the city was looking to invite cannabis refineries or certain types of businesses, whether it's a nonprofit or a church, pick it, you name it, they can establish a tariff for that, maybe require them to buy green energy, and again, those green energy sales will actually assist the city in developing this budget, and, and again, in tiny cities, if you were to lower the rates, and say, we have lower energy rates for this particular type of business, you may be able to attract new business that the city didn't have. That's the flexibility of having a CCA. So we've seen this used as an economic development tool for public agencies, and it's also been a, assistance in, in energy generation for other agencies like Lancaster. Lancaster actually has a requirement in their conditional use permits or new permits for certain industries that they buy from Lancaster Choice Energy, which is the name of their CCA, and requires them to buy a certain level of green energy from their portfolio. So again, this is energy production, energy sales, again, that assists the, the cities with the development of their programs, economic development tools, and at the very end of the day, it is, again, for Lancaster and for most agencies, this will probably be the biggest revenue item for the city, and the biggest impact environmental the city can make. If we're looking to get started, a CCA requires that a city develop a technical study. What this study does is it allows the city to really quantify the value of energy and what does it mean. So if I were to say, you can join an LA County program, and your citizens can save 2%, is that a good number? Well, unless you have a benchmark or know how much you truly could save without a study, you really won't know how good of a value it is. What the CCA, California Choice Energy Authority is offering to all agencies here in California is to assist with the technical studies, one that we've completed here for Pico Rivera, San Jacinto, and in the process for other cities as well, is will help the city not only do the technical study, but at the end of the study process, city of Ballpark will become a certified with this California Public Utilities Commission as its own CCA. That doesn't mean that you have to operate, but you will have a CCA at the end of the day. This will give the city the opportunity, if you so desire, to, can either staff it yourself and, and run your CCA, or you can choose to outsource the services with the California Choice Energy Authority, and we can help assist in the development, just like we're doing with Pico Rivera and with other cities. So this is an opportunity to, to move forward. The technical study is about $63,000, and again, at the end of the study, you'll have your CCA here with the state, with this, its own city here, so it's not part of a JPA, it's not a CCA that belongs to somebody else, it's this city's CCA. The process can take anywhere between 12 months to 18 months. The longest lead time there is actually gathering energy data from SCE to determine, and we go through the analysis of what the energy load looks like to the city, and then we simply bring those results back to the city and start sharing with you, this is how much energy's required, and this is how we'll get you there, and this is the differential gap rate. So as this process gets started, we'll walk you through this as we have for Pico Rivera and other cities. This slide here, we're not intending for us to actually go through all of these pieces, but I would like to share, these are some of the operational pieces that go into a CCA, so everything from your regulatory compliance, your filing, there's specific notices that need to go out as you start the process. Having done this for the past two years with Lancaster, we have a very good template that works for Edison, again, we're the only ones ever in operating this long in Edison territory, so we've got the biggest successful track record of operating a CCA here in Edison territory, and these are some of the steps that would be managed by the CCA. And again, this hybrid JPA approach allows the city to form its own CCA and allow California Choice Energy to become the operational support. the future's energy to become the operational support for your C C A. This was the proposed timeline that we gave to Pico Rivera. And as you can see, we're right about that August 2017 for our launch. And that's exactly August, September where we're at, Pico Rivera, and also San Jacinto. So they're getting ready to launch their program. I think in general, I think by year three, I think they're expecting a little bit over $2 million as far as their energy fund revenue from just that city's program revenues, and what that means to that city for Pico Rivera, for their C C A. And there's a website here for California Choice Energy Authority if you guys would like to see some of this information. And as always, I've always been available here for the city. For any questions you have on this, we have to at least field questions and answer them.
Yeah, may I have a question? I personally think this is an advantageous program for us, of course, and benefiting, and maybe also possibly, you like some of these funds throughout the city as well, large savings, and more so if you're able to get more cities on it. But I think this is something we definitely need to pursue, because I think it'd be beneficial for us. But Councilman Ricardo Pacheco?
I'll just be, I didn't need to speak real quick. Sean, are you now affiliated with our school or is?
No, no, we didn't. No, no, we didn't.
Should we start with that? Now, you're now looking at L A County, is L A County, is there some?
No, no affiliation. So L A County has its own J P program that is solely sponsored and supported by L A County staff, that is separate from the J P A of the California Choice Energy Authority, which operates independently from the L A County. So as a city, you have a choice to either form your own, staff it yourself, or form your own and have California Choice Energy Authority J P manage it. Or you can simply just opt into L A County and let them run a program, and you can try to, so all those options are still available. Thank you.
Yes, at this point, Councilman Cruzbacka?
Thank you very much. I've heard of how a lot of cities are opting for this. I've spoken to some of the council members in Azucar, as well as Pico Rivera. They were very excited that this program was going to finally, I guess they're finally going to see some of the revenue. And I think it's something, and I agree with Mayor Rosano, I think it's something that we need to explore. It seems like there's a lot of positive things that some of the cities are saying. We will not lose Edison as far as the repairs and some of the things that we're used to having. That was my question. If we have a power outage, do we have to wait a week before someone comes? No, Edison would still be responsible for all the repairs and all the equipment within our city. So without dragging it on, I think it's something I should explore. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Cruzbacka. Vice Mayor, Mr. Rubio?
Yeah, it's certainly interesting, but I don't have many questions. And I would like to suggest that we bring back a study session, that we have a way to agree with asking questions and looking for the information, if you can have that information forward to us in advance, so we can have that, is that okay? The council's bringing back their study session?
Okay, so Vice Mayor, so we suggested that we, they come back and they can do maybe a study session for us?
Yes, in a smaller setting, so we can ask those questions.
Yes, I definitely think this is something advantageous long-term for the city of Baldwin Park. So, all right, so let's set that up, yes.
I think if we're going to go ahead with the motion, I would also like to open it up to the community, so that the community can also listen and have their input as to how it's going to affect them, and the businesses, of course.
Absolutely. Yes, Councilman Monica Garcia?
I think if we consider Conner Energy, then we should also look at the county program just to see the pros and cons. And I believe there's yet another choice out there, just to understand what's available to us and really study the issue generally.
All right, thank you. At this point, is there a motion, Vice Mayor?
The motion is to bring it back in a smaller setting, and I will agree with Councilwoman Cruzbacka. We should also validate it to the community so they can stop buying this information.
Is there a second? A second by Councilman Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See you in a second. Thank you, looking forward to seeing you guys. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, so at this point, that's the only item that we have in that particular area. So I have no further questions. Let me go ahead and go on to the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak?
One thing before we start talking, I just want to thank and invite everyone to our concerts and the beginning of the street fair at Morgan Park. It has been really exciting. I think we've all had a great time. And thank you very much to Manny Carillo, of course, and staff, and everyone that has attended, our police department, the chief, everyone seems to be having a really nice time. Look forward to the many more to come. So please, if you haven't, please, and thank you very much, I see La Cocina, owners out there for the great food in Garunos and the beer garden, and I could go on and on, but thank you very much, everybody.
All right, thank you. All right, so at this point, we'll now open it to public communication. Anyone wishing to speak? Please say your name, I have approximately three minutes. Good evening.
Okay, my name is Mary O'Neal, I was here back in March.
Yes.
All ready?
Oh, okay, thank you, sir. So I came back in March, talking about our club team, Baldwin Park United, who got invited to go play in Spain, and already made that trip. And the picture that's up there is the day we left, June 22nd, to Spain from Aliex. And that's when we arrived in Spain about, it was a 10 and a half hour flight, and our first stop was to Barcelona. My mic might look into it. Okay, thank you, sorry. All right, so here we go again. And the girls got to visit one of the stadiums in Barcelona, the Barcelona H C Stadium. There they are at the stadium, we got a tour of the stadium. They also visited the Sagrada Familia in Barcelona, which was completely amazing. And we had an opening ceremonies, and there's our coach, Armando Gutierrez, and as you can see, there was four teams from the United States, and Baldwin Park United is right there with their sign at the, at the front. And they're the girls, they had like the opening ceremony, they had a little parade and stuff, and they got to hold the American flag and the sign for Baldwin Park. And I had a video, but it's not going to work, so I'm going to skip it, but it was them being introduced. And at the end of the opening ceremonies, they took a picture there, they took the Baldwin Park City flag, and they used it then at one of the games. This was their first game, where they tied 1-1 to a team from Spain. There's some of the fans waving our Baldwin Park flag. And that was at the end of the game. And they did pretty well. They won three games, tied one, lost one. So they did come home with the trophy and medals. So there's the team. And there's our trophy that we brought home and the medals. There's a few of the girls, and coached Armando Gutierrez with my daughter. And after that, we got to go to Madrid, and again, this is the other soccer stadium. We were there for a couple of days, and that was our last game in Madrid. And the man with the gray shirt with the girl with the 93, that was our tour guide that stayed with us the whole time. It was a really great experience for the girls. They had a lot of fun, and it was really exciting being there representing the United States, the city of Baldwin Park. And they have been invited to go to Puerto Rico, Costa Rica next summer. So we will see, you know, where that takes us. And at this time, I couldn't bring anyone because they're on practice right now, they're getting ready for their season, so they couldn't come. But I would like to thank those that supported us in this adventure. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations, good job.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, the resident of Baldwin Park. This is a lot of great things going on. Where are we getting the money? You people don't understand very well English. Money means to pay the debt. We're in debt, aren't we, Mayor? Just nod your head one way or the other. At the rate we're going, I hate saying this, but I'll say it anyway, your police department better be careful with the sheriff department. Because your budget is real big, and the easiest way for them to get rid of it is boot you guys out and bring the sheriff department out. Last time I'll say it. Ramona and wherever else you guys are doing, knock the trees down, plant new trees, water it, and so on and so on, how much money are you spending to do this? Millions of dollars, like you did the nature park? Or you're just trying to wash this over our head? I know you look at me very like, what's he talking about? You guys got sprinklers on Ramona every six feet or less. You must have a million sprinklers from the 605 to the end of Ramona down here, the other end of Baldwin Park. Oh, I forgot, Baldwin Park Boulevard has them from one end to the other. You know, for a city that's not doing too good financially, you people are spending money like it's growing on trees. I know I keep saying that, but I'll keep saying it. Something else, your minutes, a lot of money there. Where are you getting all this money? I know, she's going to put an assessment down us. That's the way you guys work. You and every other city in California, maybe across the country even. So think about it, all you people that work up here. We're not the only ones getting taxes, residents, so are you. Buy local bread, go to the bathroom, go to Kaiser, go anywhere, you're paying for this. So am I. I get tired of paying taxes, but you people don't care. You figure the more, the more better for us. But you're wrong. It should be that way. But that's the way you run city code. You five people need to get back to reality. You're like Trump, you don't live in reality. Reality means you need money to pay the debt. If you don't have money, you better get it from somewhere. I know the good old taxpayer, you don't care. Three seconds, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, all right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, lovely. I love the presentation a little bit earlier, but it was one thing that was questioning or unquestioning, it said as revenue to the city. Would there ever be revenue on your presentation for community energy choice aggregation to the residents? Nothing was mentioned about. I love the competition, and as you know, I'm a former Edison employee of plus 35 years. So my concern would be, would it be a benefit to the ratepayers? I don't think there are benefits to the city, benefits to the city, benefits to the city. Is there a benefit to the ratepayers? That's my number one. On your consent calendar, if I can get an update on item number six, that's just the city item that we got listed, I would like to get more information on that as well. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, huh? All right, may I allow a public communication?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor, council members, staff, and residents of Baldwin Park. My name is Christina Larios, I'm the library manager of Baldwin Park Library. I'm here to announce that, you haven't already heard, but last July 1st, we expanded our hours. We now have new hours, we're open more earlier. We now open at 11:00 a.m. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday till 8:00 p.m. And Friday and Saturday, we're now open at 9:00 a.m. instead of 10:00 a.m. So you can all come visit us earlier. I also want to announce that on Wednesday, July 26th, we have a really nice collaboration going on with the city of Baldwin Park. We're having our summer discovery program finale. We're having a free juggling program, David Cousin, who is a five world record holder in juggling. He'll be at Morgan Park, this is a juggling amphitheater, on Wednesday, July 26th at 3:00 p.m. So we hope everybody can join us. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much for the wonderful job that you did at the library as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we'll call communications.
Justice Flotman, president from Baldwin Park. Mayor, elected officials, city of Baldwin Park. And usually something has to bother me or rattle my attention to come here. Now, what I'm here about is the city of Baldwin Park getting into the business of cultivating weed, marijuana. Now, I have attended two meetings, and questions have not been properly answered. It's always, we're going to look into it, or they don't know what's going on. Now supposedly, there's supposed to be some experts, and the questions that I have seen, the questions that I, that I asked, but there was last meeting that was of an ex-city council from one of our neighborhoods. He asked him questions. He had the effect that it's going to have on the city, the effect it's going to have on the surrounding community cities. Is there any cost or repercussions? The negative effects going to have on the kids? And I'd like to also know who is funding this research? Now, my time will be very short. I do have other questions that I won't have time to ask, but I will say one thing, that going off from this, the last chief that we had was very charismatic. Now, the present chief that we have, I only encountered him a little bit, he didn't provide any answers that were correct. I'm not impressed with his credentials. I'm impressed he's charismatic and answers the questions that are presented to him. Now, now, it's went off my agenda. And I would like to also know the fact that it's going to have on our community, like I said, who's funding it? If we have anything for the cost that's going to bring on us? We all already know, quoting words from policemen, as a city with a liquor store in every corner, now what are we going to be known as? Surrounded by drugs, cultivating drugs? That's a negative effect on my city. What's going to happen to my property value? And I don't want to hear that it's not going to be affected, it is going to be affected. I have a lot more questions, but I won't have the time, or either I'm speaking a bit too slow. Now, there was questions also that were being asked, if the citizens of Baldwin Park would be able to somehow be involved with the upgrade in the facilities where it's going to be taking place. There was no answer provided, all they ever said, well, you would have to apply. Now, and I thought that would be a little bit ahead of the game.
All right, thank you very much, and I'll cover a little bit more.
Good evening, Ken Woods, I'm a concerned citizen. This median project, I thought it was supposed to be drought tolerant. It looked like it started out that way. I mean, they were, you know, pulling down the old trees, filling up the holes, doing, all of a sudden it changed. Now we got flowers everywhere, we got bushes, we got thousands of sprinkler heads. Well, how can that be drought tolerant? Did Sid Masavi get involved in this thing and all of a sudden pushing all this crap out to us? I don't understand. But it's not drought tolerant. Let's make this project drought tolerant. You cannot please everybody. Like Councilman Garcia said, she had one person that didn't like something, one person. You know, if 50% of the people like it, according to Trump, that's the majority. So let's make it drought tolerant, drought tolerant. We need the water. So, and the other thing on this electrical stuff, I cannot believe that there are these millions and millions of dollars floating around for someone to grab that Edison shouldn't be taken care of. This sounds like bait and switch to me. And if you guys want to fall for that stuff, jump in.
All right, thank you, Mr. Woods. Anyone else who should speak? All right, I now declare the public communication closed. Let me, first of all, just say, with reference to, is the city in debt? We're not in debt. We're in good condition. Some of the areas that you pointed out, we've got a good portion of grants, so that's Some of the areas that you pointed out, we've got a good portion of grants, so that's a good part about the city of Baldwin Park. With reference to the, yes, Mr. Woods, I'll admit, that's probably been the most controversial issue of the year. With reference to the medium and the plants and the amount of time that the actual project has been taken. And the vast, I should say, every tree that's in there is drought tolerant, and I believe, am I correct? Even the plants that are going in there. Yes, you probably do see multiple different sprinklers there, but they're not spraying all at once. I guess it's some kind of irrigation type of system, so I just wanna, wanna state that for the record, so that at least we know that that is occurring. And hopefully Sam could put closure to that, so that we could all at least celebrate that. Okay, so, I think that's the only thing I have to answer this one. Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia?
I'd like to ask Mr. Flot, if you can provide your questions to our city attorney, so that we can take them into consideration as we're looking at the issue. And I encourage you just to come out to the community meetings, continue to do that, but let's send your list of questions to our city attorney, and we'll take them into consideration as we're having conversations.
Thank you. One thing I, 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 I'd like to brought that up for Mr. Flot, is that...
Mayor, I can't hear you.
Oh, okay, the, just wanna follow up and I thank Mr. Woods, that the actual cannabis is primarily going to be restricted to transportation and cultivation, and it becomes reality in the city of Baldwin Park, meaning that we're not going to have any dispensaries throughout the community, and they have been restricted to commercial, through commercial zones, so it's not going to be near a residential area. And of course, you'll hear more information about the actual industry as well, as we go on. So just wanna set that for the record. And as Councilmember Monica Garcia stated, if you do have further questions, we do have individuals that could answer that for you as well, at the conclusion of the meeting itself. Here?
Yes, Councilmember.
I also wanna add, that in reference to cannabis, that it is at a exploratory phase, for maybe showing, we need input from all the community. Yeah, this four workshops to inform the community of this decision that we're gonna make. I think before that we had staff that worked on other workshops, but we wanna make sure we got all the input good for our community, and before we go forward with anything. It is, there will not be any dispensaries, that we're not gonna have at every corner, especially, you know, selling marijuana, which is limited to manufacturing and cultivation. And with that, you'll probably won't see much of any activity going on with that. So while we're looking at it, and we will continue to inform the public as we go forward. Also, with the CCA, there are several different options for the city to look at. Some of the city managers trying to make sure that we've got all our different options before we decide to take an option, anything with regards to the CCA. So we will talk to the public again on the CCA, to see if there's any input, input for that. So there are workshops in the future for that. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, Councilmember Chaco. But check out Councilmember Cruzbaca, yes ma'am?
In regards to Mr. Woods, in regards to the CCA, from what I understand, I've never seen Mr. Connor's presentation before, he's not today. I have seen LDCs, and what they're going to be offering, or what the cities will be opting for, I don't think Rivera and Zuzo do, they give discounted rates to their residents, which would be a lot lower than what Edison. Now, that's, I'm going to reiterate what Councilmember Chaco said, we are still exploring, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered, this is not a done deal, we haven't signed on the dotted line. So, I'm looking forward to having some other people do presentations or other companies, so that we can get everything answered. Thanks.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Cruzbaca. Yes, Vice Mayor Susan Rubio.
Well, and there's also, to the initial point that we need to invite your residents to some of the same sessions, so they have all the information, they can ask questions, I think it's, it would appreciate your comments. If we're ready to answer your questions, I just wanna, because I have a lot of that I've been using since I was a public servant, I would like those to come to Saturday events that are happening, first on July twenty-sixth, from eight AM till eleven AM, we have coffee with the cops at the Johnos on Ramona, fourteen zero eight Ramona, so please come and join us. We also have National Night Out, a Target, that's August first, five thirty PM to nine PM, that's the Target Center on Baldwin Park Boulevard, so please come and join us. And I believe I saw some of the flyers being distributed. And then we have a fight day that we always have every year, so that is August fifth, so everyone's welcome to participate in, join us. And with that there, we'll go see each other.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
One more, before everybody leaves, and Alaba, you got this flyer, it's the Baldwin Park Police Department that, with the pink, like a lot of police departments, but all the proceeds are going to City of Hope. The patches are ten dollars, and you can get them at the police department, or maybe one of the officers can tell you how you can obtain them. It is a really worthy cause for City of Hope, and I think it's great for our police department to participate in something such a worthy cause. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to have our chief of police, if he can please just explain how it'll be close for us, and make sure that they know about the program. Thank you.
Yes ma'am, thank you. The program has been started some time ago by various first parks, it's called the Pink Patch Program, and it's in recognition for breast cancer month, which is the month of October. And this organization has decided to participate, and the only way they can do it is to sell these, sell police patches. Also, these patches will be worn on our uniform, we're gonna be supplying to our police officers who are under uniform during the month of October. As a form of recognition for breast cancer month, and not only that, to make the community aware, because obviously we're out in the community twenty-four seven, and we contact people all the time. And the patches, and you can see a picture of them on the flyer, they really stand out with the contrast between the pink and the black, and the silver and white. So, you know, they'll really stand out in our uniforms, and also recognition to, obviously cancer is something that's in our society, but specifically breast cancer, because it's breast cancer alert. You can simply contact the police department, we'll have a website up, it'll be on our website, it'll be on the city website, on how to get the patches. We don't make any money on this, only thing that goes to the City of Hope, like we talked about. It's cost natural, because we just support to start off, to buy the patches, and then the money that comes in, we pay for the patches, and then return with more patches, whatever profit is maybe goes to the city, both for the Baldwin Park Police Department. So it's our way of doing a police department's participation in recognition of the National Breast Cancer Month, building of the October. Thank, thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you very much, thank you chief. Alright, so at this point, no further comments, I will now refer over to the consent calendar, Councilmembers, which is four?
Yes. I have a couple items, five, six, seven, eight, and eleven.
Okay, anyone else?
Number four, please.
Number four, okay, Councilmember Monica Garcia. And Councilmember Cruzbaca?
Five and nine.
Five and nine. A moment. Do I leave any for you, Councilmember Chaco?
No.
Alright, so at this point, I'd like to make a motion of consent calendar with the exception of four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and eleven. That is my motion.
Item seven.
Second, any objection? See not so move. Alright, this point, we'll go over to item four, that's requested by Vice Mayor, no, excuse me, Councilmember Monica Garcia, meeting minutes, Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to pull this item and have it brought out with the next council meeting.
Second, any objection? See not so move. Alright, I will go to item five, requested by Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Susan Rubio, order the constructions contract and appropriations of gas tax funds for city project number twenty seventeen dash zero one eight, stop improvement, project phase one. Vice Mayor?
MSF. Ms. Cruzbaca.
Oh, yeah, CP, sorry about that, Cruz.
Number five.
Yeah, number five. Thank you.
Because I also wanted to say, so that's right. I just want to clarify that the solar panels, and I think I discussed this in the earlier presentation that we had at the special meeting, I wanna be sure that they're anti-theft or anti-graffiti, if we're going to do these solar panels. I know we've been waiting a long time, and I'm very excited to see this project go forward, but I wanna be sure that we're not getting to a ride there one morning and they'll be gone. So, unfortunately, that's something that we need to look at as well.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll look at those during this. I believe that was item number...
Yeah, five. Item number five.
Item, yes it is.
Five and CP, that's our...
Yes.
The solar lighting.
The solar...
Oh, solar lighting.
Yes. That's why I was saying, I don't know how they're installed or whether, I'm just looking at it.
Yeah, we're gonna be installing the tamper systems and structures, so it will be, for the most part, I don't think that...
Thank you. Any motion that we pass out to number five?
I'll second. Any objections? See not so move. Item number six, requested by Vice Mayor Susan Rubio, designation as sister city to the municipality of Norteslan, in Akiya, Sacatecas, Mexico, are they here?
I think so.
Oh, you know they were here last week. Okay, sorry about that, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to verify, you know, last time, you also put this on the agenda, but I, first of all, I welcome our sister cities, our panel here, I just like to clarify that this is not just up anymore, we give them a designation, maybe this happens, we need a host committee, so the way we work, it's be someone from Baldwin Park taking out critical spokes. So I'm gonna recommend that we pass all the information to our sister cities, so that's for already, not the members, but our panel here, because they need to be able to reach out and see how we can coordinate with our current sister city members, so they can reach out and do all the work, it's not that simple.
Sounds good.
So, I would make a motion to make sure that they have all the information, and that we also, at least for now, give them resources so they can talk to these new folks if you have, and figure out how we can work with them. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Second, any objections? See not so move.
Okay, I wanna just ask a question. How you have a question to all sister cities, you just want a clarification?
What's that?
See, the mayor made a motion, he wanted information, but really, this isn't staying information, other than he agreed to let them be part of our sister cities, but again, need a committee, if I only does a council, we can do it, so if you wanna reach out and see how we can work with them, that would be perfect.
Let me, let me find out, because I believe they were here accidentally last week, I think there was a city council meeting, so, and I did, when I, when I did speak to them, they're, they're from Baldwin Park, by the Sacatecanos, they know they're gonna run it independent of the city, so whatever funds is gonna be primary, just like what you guys do. So I'll do is, I'll give you the number, so you can be in contact with a pretty big sized group, just to let you know, from what I hear. Alright, thank you, we'll bring the Vanda for Cruzbaca. Alright. Yes, beautiful. Alright, let's move on, you guys. Thank you very much now.
Vanda.
Alright, but, okay, so, inside joke, everybody. Alright, here we go. The next one is the Vice Mayor Susan Rubio, approve of the consultant service agreement for Stanley Security Solutions Team. So at this point...
I just want clarification, Sam, you stated in your report that you wanted to absorb the existing contract, can you clarify why you need to take over a contract not completed?
Yeah, as it currently stands right now, it is an ongoing contract that started many years ago with Honeywall, and it's been renewed every year, there's, there hasn't been an update from the council or the service. So this, this is gonna absorb that, and that existing service plan is for the existing access, so this is a project, as I expected. So that is an ongoing, it's been going on, I think that's about nineteen, nineteen thousand dollars. So this is an absorb that contract. In addition to that, it will bring upgrades, all of the access control systems will be upgraded to modern technology, whether with storage upgrades, server upgrades, software upgrades. After we're all done, then we'll have access to vehicle access to the gates. And I'll pass it over to the chief, and elaborate.
And I told Sam I wanted to speak to this, it actually started back three years ago. We have a motherboard panel down in the basement that basically runs everything in the city, in terms of our security issue, camera, access cards, then the utility, security to the field, security to our property and evidence, security to weapons. Also, our readings could go in, uh, the solid doors that go up and down, that it's secure as a lock-in. This, this motherboard, this panel, and the software that we have handles all of this, all the cards and everything. Well, it's extremely updated, we don't have any updates for it, they don't even manufacture it anymore. So this is really important in terms of security for us as a police agency, and also the cards that we issue to everybody who works for the city that gets access to different areas, because we run it as the police department. The reason we run it is because we were in charge of the property and evidence and weaponry and stuff like that, so that's why it's important for us. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit, to kinda explain why it's really important to have this place.
Thank you, Mayor, I was just, like I said, I just wanted a clarification on the Honeywall, because we came over the contract, but you don't have my question, thank you so much.
Alright, so at this point, wanna make a motion?
Make a motion, so for this, thank you, Mayor.
Second by Councilmember Cruzbaca, any objections? See not so move. Alright, the next one, also by Councilmember Vice Mayor Susan Rubio, a consideration of the energy audit agreement. So at this point, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, I already heard the presentation upstairs, and first, I have several questions, because I know that we own and involved in the audit committee, so we're just, I mean, we're doing, I think this is a third audit that we do in terms of this type of project, so I just wanted to update, whether it happens to the other companies that we have contracted with?
Thank you, we did have, and out of that committee came the recommendation to have ComEd complete their audit, they actually did that, they came back to, they made recommendations to do various improvements throughout the city, they obtained, helped us obtain a three million dollar loan from the California Energy Commission. They're in the process of doing those upgrades, which includes solar at Baldwin Park, and some of the other parks, upgrades of transformers, and upgrades to some of the city lighting in the buildings and structures, as well as some other HVAC heat and air conditioning upgrades. So that's going in the process. MRSO approached us some time ago and wanted to do an audit, we told them, you know, we just had this audit done, and they looked at everything, and they said, okay, well, we'll take a look at it, we'll see if there's anything we can help and add to that, and so that's, that's how they came, they came about, looked at the facilities, and they came up with these three additional items, the solar panels, the park construction, the teen center, and the traffic systems and lights.
I just wanted to clarify, so we, they were able to see your report right about a company, so this is not, I guess I was concerned that they weren't aware of that report, and we were doing teen services, and if so, I was afraid that the other company maybe would want some of this stuff. Can I just suggest that we put this on hold, because I wanna see that report first, and if you can give us a timeline of all the upgrades that are going on, so then we can put the projects together and just kinda see where we go with that. And I think we've discussed it upstairs, I want a little more information on how we can create that in the future, so can you just put this on hold and bring it back, so we can have both reports together?
Sure, we can bring it back. They did review the report from the previous energy consultant to make sure there was no duplication, but we can have it back and give you more information soon.
But there was a third company, the cycle that you were discussing was the first company, I just remember that.
Yeah, the first company, we did, I think it was Siemens.
Yes, that's right.
They were not really coming up with a very good or feasible plan, and that's when the city decided to go with ComEd. ComEd took over and basically did all of the projects that seemed to stand out in that doing.
Okay, but like I said, I just wanted a clarification, making sure we're not doing teen services, that they were aware of the other projects that we have going on, and that you take all the suggestions that we gave you upstairs and bring it next time along, that's your bring it back. Okay, the council?
Mayor, one other thing, to be sure that we have the cost clarified, so that we know exactly what the cost will be. I believe you mentioned there were three different, the teen center, teen center...
Park construction.
Park construction, the police park construction, that's right. So if, if we could have like a breakdown of the costs in comparison to what's already been done, so that we know what it's going to cost us for this phase?
Sure, and just to reiterate, we did take a look at the scope of work that currently is being implemented, to ensure that we're not doing any efforts, and so we can assure that this is separate and independent to additional benefits to the city from a city standpoint. But we'll be happy to kinda walk you through what that looks like in a model situation.
That describes, I was just...
Yes, so there's no duplication, so that's what we need to come back for, to ensure that there is no duplication, I can state to you right now, the work with that, we lived early through the work that's currently being, has been audited, as well as the work that's currently in progress, and so there is zero duplication ever.
Thank you so much for that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So my motion is to bring it back to the next council meeting, where we have all the information available for us to, to, thank you, Mayor.
I second.
I think, second, yeah, second?
Because I want to see the...
Um, because I want to see the two, and I know Con Ed's in there somewhere. So why don't our Con Ed's be here to update us where they're at before they did? And then if you could just identify, you know, what you're doing in addition to, I guess it's pretty much what we presented, but, but we just want to make sure that we're not, there's no kind of duplica, desire of duplication.
Absolutely.
And how does it help the overall picture, since we've got Con Ed's and kind of load up things, and they've already started some of their work? And it's a solar portion, needs to be, it's still punishing with that, so if staff could tell us next week, through Con Ed's and the word, which other solar panels are returning, what status they're at? And it appears that, um, you're looking at other locations, that maybe the other companies that have come to look at, uh, these studies, for some reason, you know, look at those particular regions, and that's kind of a few times, a little bit more, uh, you know, possible benefits to us. So we were kind of just see how both studies were, and we want to pre-visit that, how we look together and to pre-check our overall energy.
Sure, well done. All right, okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, the next item, item nine, requested by Councilor Cruz Baca, formation of the Ballpark Municipal Finance Authority.
Uh, I would just, I would like a, uh, qualification, clarification if you please, Rose, um, as to, excuse me?
Yes.
My motion wasn't in this.
Well, the motion, what, what, uh, Council?
I made a motion.
You had a second?
Uh, Cruz Baca seconded, and you just sort of reiterated, reiterated my comments earlier, and I was correct.
There was no, no opposition.
I just wanted to add that, aside from what the council wants to bring in next week, to also provide, and perhaps Con Ed's in there, to provide us with an update of where our project is, and, and for, or is supposed to tell us what the difference is between both, both sides. Uh, is it the same motion or not?
Yes, that's correct, that's correct. All right, then, thank you, that's fine. All right, we'll go over to item eleven.
No, no, no.
Nine, Cruz Baca, formation of the Ballpark Municipal Finance, thank you.
Yes, and Rose is going to explain so that I can understand, or we can all understand what the difference is and why they changed. Thank you, Rose.
Good evening, uh, mayor and city council. Uh, this item is to create a joint power authority of the city of Baldwin Park and Ballpark House Authority as its member. And to, uh, in order for the city to, uh, finance or refinance, to, uh, get some funding to, uh, for the improvement target, we have performed this joint power authority. And as you may recall, in the last city council meeting, we proposed, uh, to finance the two thousand four bonds.
Yes.
And in order for us to do that, we have performed a refinancing authority. Uh, in nineteen ninety-eight, the city and the former RDA formed the joint power authority. And due to the distribution act, the use of the former joint power financing authority is limited. To this, our successor agency, uh, due to this, we have performed a refinancing authority. In order for the city to, uh, issue bonds, or refinance the bonds in the future. I hope I answered.
Oh, yes you did, thank you. I just wanted clarification and also to understand, and then, I, I remembered that you had mentioned that after, I, I heard part of what you were saying, so thank you very much. I make a motion that we pass number nine.
I'll go ahead in a second. That, that's, any objections? See now so move. All right, item eleven, also by Council, Vice Mayor, um, San Rubio, the approved West Covina jail contracts and fee increase.
Good, yeah, that was exactly what I was asking. I mean, I know that they can help you out, are being all the ways, but why, I was just wondering why you'd increase, where did that come from?
Uh, they decided the contract, uh, they decided to have to increase because of your cost. Uh, probably has to do with employee pay raises, because of that issue. Uh, the reason we use those to be, we've got a long-standing contract with you, is our facility to run it, is how, uh, we could book people in front of it, but we can't. How to per se to do it for days, I don't know what's to do, but there's no other strategy that makes it so that you're ahead of West Covina. Um, you want other option, you have to take the shares, because the shares have a hundred and eighty dollars per day, so we pay three dollars less to have a house in West Covina, and we have good relationships with them, so we will continue to do it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, I question, mayor, any motion to approve this, I don't know, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any objections? See now so move. All right, we'll go over to, uh, is that it? On the second, all right, all right. So we'll go over to the, uh, we'll go to the successor agency ordinance number two to repeal a cell stack ordinance. So who's handling this, or does anyone have any questions? Let's go say, count it anyways, right? All right, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass.
Second.
Second, any objections? See now so move. All right, we'll go to the public hearing, item thirteen, which is the adoption of budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen dash eighteen for the city of Baldwin Park. Ballpark Finance Authority, Ballpark Housing Authority, and successor agency. Any council members, any questions? I know we went through this thoroughly. If not, I'm gonna go ahead and, go ahead.
I have, I'm sorry, but I have one question, I think in the future, we've already been through this and hashed it over, so I understand. But in the future, I know that I've mentioned this before, um, I think that we should really aggressively look, and I know that, um, we have staff that does, and, and I know maybe we, everybody has stretched thirty dollars for the max. But I would really like to see if there's any way that we could have sponsors for the parade, um, especially having, we're probably exploring bringing in new businesses into Baldwin Park, and also for the state of the city, uh, of course. Um, see if, if maybe the Ballpark Business Association or someone would, you know, uh, even part of it. Um, also the Halloween Fest, I know that the police department has a wonderful Halloween festivities for the children. Is there something where we could join forces and do one big thing for the city? Um, instead of having one at the park, another one at, at, uh, the police department, so those are just some of my ideas. Those are just some of my ideas, is looking at the budget this time around, that maybe it would be something for us to really try to consider, um, really try to consider, by any of these departments, or the chief, or those who are in the police department, to look at for, uh, twenty seventeen eighteen, or twenty nineteen nineteen was it? Seventeen, seventeen eighteen, yes.
And, uh, just for, just for clarification, that parade is not included in the budget.
Okay, but I did see it, that's why I mentioned it.
Yes, that's it, I'll turn it over.
Yes.
All righty, okay, so at this point, no further questions, I'm, go ahead and move. Yes.
I was gonna ask why the parade isn't included in the budget?
Uh, it was presented in the last study session as an alternative item, but it's not planned at this point. Um, Rose, for me, could, um, remind me of that cost? Uh, but we were presenting to you a balanced budget, um, we could have included in the budget, but, um, you know, that would, that might even probably have to come at surplus or make your budget adjustment. But Rose or Manny, do you remember the cost for the parade?
Said sixty thousand, three dollars?
Yeah, you know, I, I advocated for the parade, because this is really a youth program in our community, it's a tradition. And our community loves this event. I know that it's, it is looking at sixty thousand, um, that we have to find. Whether it's through sponsorship, or whether it's, uh, through other funds that we may have. But I definitely don't want to write it off at this point in time. I'd like us to include it, because it's an important event, we've heard from our community time and again, how much this is, um, good news to them. This is a tradition. I grew up in the city of Baldwin Park, and, um, I participated in these programs. And I know Carmen Barbies is out there, you participated in these programs, uh, many of you, Jeanne Oyala and, and others, so I would ask that we keep this program, I think it's important. I've heard our community talk about it time and again, and, uh, they were very disappointed when we had to cut it. We have the king and queen here who participated in the parade, and I know that you have loved it every year, and it's been a special event for you. So again, I'd like to ask that we keep that in the budget, we're not writing it off yet, and then just figure out how we, how we, um, include this.
And if we also concur, so we can add it into the budget, and we will bring back, um, the subject report with some options, uh, to fund it, including looking for sponsorships.
I would like to see the altern, alternatives first. I know it's a wonderful event, I, I, believe me, I remember all the way when Ballpark High School had their drill team in, back in the Stone Age, and everybody looked forward to, to having this parade. It's, it's a wonderful event for our city, absolutely, I agree with Councilmember Garcia. But I also want to think of the sixty thousand dollars, and maybe this is a way for us to be able to work diligently to try to see if we can come up with some sponsors that will pay for at least half of it. So can we do that before we add it on to the budget? And see if we can come up with some alternatives, and then, uh, plan at the beginning of the year to add it on if we come up with, um, if we come up aggressively, uh, and I think we're all responsible for trying to reach out to someone to donate to the parade. So I, I think that, um, I think that we should look at it back in January. I think we should leave the budget the way it is and approve it, and in January bring this back, because at that time, at that time, I think we'll have, I know that the parade for this year, I have, I have almost sixty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to include the parade in this proposed budget. And we can, your, as to your suggestion, we can decide how we pay for it as we move along, but I would like it, I would like to just propose.
Second, any objections? Okay, if not, we're gonna go ahead and include it, and then we're gonna look towards seeing additional funds raised.
Thank you for the support.
All right, thank you. All right, okay, so we'll go ahead and, uh, at this point, Councilor, you also had something about the budget?
No, I guess it's all been, uh, preserved in the public, I mean, yes, all, all we want to approve.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, there was, uh, there were goals in the budget, right, each party had goals, so just want to make sure that the person have to follow their goals and make sure that we're completing them throughout the year, uh, so that we continue to see a proper spin-off of it. Then we demonstrate to the public, then we are the, uh, held accountable, and simply make sure our budget is, goals are met, I don't know. It hasn't moved that out in the forward to approve, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, let's go ahead, let me open up the, oh, wait, here.
That's what we had, uh, um, mayor, Rose.
No, I just want to clarify, because we've passed a bit, so just passing these without, like, going through the items, but this is something that we have two, I think, three study sessions on. And we had discussions, and we brought back a few times, so it's been, took me a really big look into the details, so just for, uh, the audience purpose, as we read, to take care of, uh, every little item, and also why it's not needed, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, so at this point, I will open up the, uh, public hearing, uh, this pattern is set for public hearing, consists of, so at this point, our budget, so anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to oppose? All right, see, see no interest, and I declare the public hearing closed. Uh, so at this point, I will make a motion to, uh, adaption of the bud, adoption of the budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen dash eighteen for the city of Baldwin Park, Ballpark Finance Authority, Ballpark Housing Authority, and successor agency, that is my motion.
Second.
Okay, any objections? See now so move. All right, this point, item fourteen.
Mayor, you can go ahead and excuse myself.
Yes, that's fine. Yes, yes, go ahead. All right, all right, so at this point, I'll, thank you. At this point, item fourteen, a request for consideration of amendment to existing, um, specific plans, uh, S P dash zero eight zero one, which modifies language prohibiting a, a gate section, uh, along the vehicular entrance on Foster Avenue, and adds language to the section four point one one, uh, allowing a retractable sliding gate subject to development standards, including adjacent property owners executive may hold harmless agreement. So at this point, let me give this over to the Honorable and the distinguished Amy Harb.
Thank you, honorable mayor, councilmembers, members of the audience.
One moment, I'm, I'm feeling a train here, make a comment.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment to the record to indicate that, as Councilmember Garcia mentioned, she's confused herself and she's no longer in the, uh, in the world.
For this, I'm taking a public, particular item.
Thank you. As the mayor said, this item for you is a request to amend an existing specific plan, S P O eight oh one, to include and modify language regarding placement of a vehicular gate on Foster Avenue at the entrance to the Belavita Townhome Project. The specific plan, which is the regulatory document that covers this and facilitated the existing fifty-two unit townhouse development tri-level condominiums, includes language that specifically prohibits walls and fences along the street front edge and Baldwin, Foster Avenue, Baldwin Park Boulevard. There's one vehicular entrance to the project, and that's on Foster Avenue. However, over the past couple of years, um, Belavita Homeowners Association has experienced numerous incidents with random suspicious people roaming the property, and an uptick increase in burglary and alarm calls. The HOA believes that with the installation of the vehicular gate, it will significantly reduce the unauthorized persons on the property, as well as a corresponding reduction in burglary alarm calls. Table three in your staff report which you have shows the number of reported calls for service over the past three years, which amounts to, for these things, probably about, what am I? Excuse me, um, probably about sixty calls for those types of incidences. Um, staff is in support of this request, provided that some of the development standards are met. Number one, that the unit directly where, adjacent to where the gate is going to be placed, execute a hold harmless agreement, holding the city harmless arising from any issues with, um, that could result this from the installation of the gate. Number two, we want county fire to approve this before any building permits are issued. We have been working with county fire since the beginning, they seem to be on board, but until I get it in writing, no permits are gonna be issued. Um, and then additionally, as you can see on here, a minimum setback from the street, as well as the minimum, and minimum, excuse me, gate opening. The planning commission heard this item at their May twenty-fourth meeting and voted for, oh, to recommend approval, so at this time, staff and the planning commission recommend that the city council open the public hearing and follow the public hearing, adopt the resolution twenty seventeen dash one ninety-four entitled, "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park Approving a Change to Language Contained in the Specific Plan," modifying and adding language in section four point one point one one of S P O eight oh one to allow retractable gate along the vehicular entrance on Foster Avenue, subject to development standards. Location is the Belavita Homeowners Association, A P N eight five five two dash zero two dash one one six. The applicant is Phil Silver, who's representing Belavita Homeowners Association, and the case number is S P eight oh one mod. And this includes staff's presentation.
All right, this point, I'm gonna go and open up the public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is that you raising your hand? Okay, any opposed? All right, see now for the interest, and I'll declare the public hearing closed. Councilmembers, have any questions? Okay, if not, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, uh, to, uh, pass, uh, the ordinance, uh, with, excuse me, the, the, the resolution, that's my motion.
Sorry.
Any objections? See now so move. Thank you. Excellent presentation, Amy.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a comment to the record about resolution number two zero one seven dash one nine?
Got, so about that, see, sorry. Uh, all right. All right, so at, at this point, we're gonna go over to the approval of the Baldwin Park Day at the Fair and appointment of a community hero. So do we have anyone yet? I think we probably should choose the military, yes.
I was going to make a suggestion that Monty, uh, Monty would be the hero, but I also, because I sent an email to Manny Barrio, um, because if I don't do it quickly, I forget. The other thing is I would like to recognize the ladies from the women's club. Um, I don't know if all of them will be able to attend, you know? But I would like to also recognize, they are the longest organization, nonprofit, philanthropic organization in the city of Baldwin Park, they have been an organization for over a hundred years.
That is true.
So I think that they need to be recognized, and of course, our council, for the council to be included as well.
Absolutely.
And, uh, the school board, I know that they said fifty people or something like that, but, and so maybe, maybe some members of the school board as well.
Yes.
Or our staff, the chief.
Yes, the VIP reception, uh, everyone is welcomed, but in regards to this evening, we would like to select our honorees. So, what I'm hearing so far is Monty, Monty Night Girl, for the community hero, for the group, it will be the women's club. And, uh, as well as the city council to participate in the actual parade. And as well as the city council to participate in the actual parade, which will be on September sixth at five P.M. And I'll provide all the details at a later.
Also, how many people are included in that? Is there room for like two other people?
We, we, let's see here, the float, which will probably be a flatbed truck. We will have the Women's Club on the float. And the city council will participate in several vehicles. And Monty will have his own vehicle, if the council chooses.
I think that'd be great.
And I believe we will get fifty tickets for community members and the city council. However, as I understand, this year, they're asking us to pick one individual and one group.
Yes, one individual.
We will make this an annual affair, so you can start thinking about other groups to pick.
Yes, we have fifty individuals that we can invite to the VIP reception for free charge. And if we'd like to invite more, there is a small nominee associated.
And you know, like, Councilmember Garcia, I mentioned to some of the ladies at a meeting we had today, some of the ladies from the Women's Club, that I was going to mention this to see if maybe it would be a part of this. And all of us remembered that back in the day, we always had a Baldwin Park Day at the Fair. We were all, all the children from the school were bussed on a particular day. And it was such a wonderful event. And I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry that for many years it didn't happen. But I'm glad that it's, that it's coming back.
Yes, with, with council's consensus, we plan on having an excursion on that specific day from the senior center, from the community center. And will also be advertised in the Baldwin Park now at a discounted rate, which I believe will be eight dollars versus the forty dollars for the county fair.
Is that what the answer is?
Yeah. But the reason I was asking was because we have Mr. and Mrs., oh, they left. Mr. and Mrs. Woods, that have been, are they here?
No, they left.
They've been a business here for about fifty years in Baldwin Park. And I think they have one of our businesses represented as well.
Well, we, we only have the option as of right now to select a community hero, which is one individual, a community group, which will, which, which council consensus, which might be the Women's Club, as well as the city council to participate. So we don't have access to having anyone else participate in any other categories at this point. Because staff will definitely explore those opportunities.
So just, no, sorry, but they're not necessarily to be in the parade. And you have fifty VIP tickets to attend?
Yes, there's two different elements. There's a parade that will go down the county fair in the fairgrounds. So that's one element. And there's also a VIP reception in one of their banquet halls. And at that point, we could acknowledge all the VIPs, all the ESO officials, Mr. and Mrs. Woods we can honor at that time, and anyone else. As part of the showcase, we'll also have an empty from maybe the mayor's or who or else we'd like to introduce everyone from Baldwin Park.
With those fifty tickets, I think it would only be a perfect execution at the Women's Club and whatever group. But I think we should invite the council, as well as our other organizations like the Water District and what else might consist of cities to be there to represent, so that we can, you know, have extra tactics for them as well. I think it's a great day, but I think everyone needs to be included. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm looking forward to it. The last time I went to the county fair, I was thirteen years there. Thirteen years old, with hair my scowl. So I'm looking forward to it.
Mayor, if you wish to, how many heroes can we have?
We have one community hero. We have one community group. And then we have the city council that will participate. So tonight, I am asking for one community hero, one individual, and one community group.
The Women's Club is one group and then?
With council's consensus, yes.
Okay. All right, okay, thank you, Reverend. We're looking forward to that event. The next one by Vice Mayor. Oh wait, go ahead, motion?
Yes, I need, I need a motion. I need a motion.
Bring the motion, she made the motion, Isaac.
Many career repeated it, it's confusing. What did I do? I'm just kidding.
Can you give us a little bit of a quick going on now? Because I have Monty. I think that the tree that we planted, we have a Jack White with the black. It's missing, can you, what happened to that tree? Just tell me how to get to it, just let me check.
Thank you.
Mayor, we got a motion in a second. No, there's nobody opposed.
No objection, okay. All right, thank you. At this point, we'll go over to the question by Councilman, we have Vice Mayor Susan Rubio. A discussion about park and park safety during summer months when children attend the parks in large numbers are unattended at parks while parents work. More safety measures are needed to keep the park safe. Vice Mayor.
Well, the most particular is the area we were discussing earlier, like the skate park, the hillous ladies park, that seems to be a little isolated. And I've got a lot of calls over, I think it was back about parents dropping off kids and so they're unattended. So I'm not sure necessarily how we can stop that. But I was thinking maybe have some signs or something that says children may not be unattended. Because they think of the park and they think they can drop them off. So I had, for example, a grandma, she was drowning. And she was saying that she experienced these kids that were there for hours alone. And she feels that parents drop them off either at work or at shop, I don't know. And then they came back later and picked them up. She was there the whole time. And of course, I would like the graffiti experiences fighting a lot of the issues that come with teenagers being out alone. So I don't know if you can actually patrol, or perhaps a sign that states that they may not be out alone. So if you can come out, she was my guess either on, I would figure, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, you also have another one, is that?
No, I have another.
Okay, discussion, discussion on the Ballpark Development Project.
So I think that's your challenge, can you give us a take please?
Yes, and I did pass out before you some information on the project that I will go over as soon as I can find my copy. Jess, do you have yours? Oh, thank you, Robert. Kick up, pick up, if you would, Monica's paperwork. So, yeah, we're in the process of their due diligence period. They've come to us after doing ninety percent of that work. And such as completing their ALTO survey, the phase one environmental, the phase two environmental surveys, soil sampling, title review, market study. They've met with the school district, they've done their acoustical analysis. They're getting their will serve letters from all of the utilities. So they're very close. However, they've run into a couple of problems with some of the easements on the properties, both on Main, which is much more difficult, and some minor issues on Bedilla with some utilities that were revealed during their due diligence and their ALTO survey. So they're going to be proposing and they're going to need to come back to the city council to propose some changes to the DDA. They're currently finishing up their due diligence period. But during that, these next ninety days, we'll need to bring that back to city council. And on the cover, you'll see there's sort of a comparison of what they had originally proposed in the DDA and what they're looking at now making some changes and having to reduce the number of units to make sure they get all of the proper parking on the side and also that they can accommodate the units within all of the utilities. So originally, Main was proposed to be twenty-six for sale units. They're now looking at proposing either nineteen for sale units or twenty-five rentals. And I think they'll bring that back as a choice to the city council. And then on Bedilla, they could propose twenty-seven units. And it's not as drastic a change, only down to twenty-three for sale units. But because it's not for the DDA, it will need to come back and have council's review and approval. So we look at doing that probably in August to September. We've talked to developer also about possibly at the next meeting, bringing back the study session to you, so they can review in detail, show the site plans. And after all, they did provide us the site plans, which are attached to your handout. But I think to see a detailed review of those in a PowerPoint presentation and have them available, chance for questions would probably be best.
All right, that answer.
Well, actually, no, I have some concerns. Well, first of all, I mean, everyone else clearly opposes this project because I certainly prefer a long end park for a community that's park poor or apartment or rentals, especially for a city hall. And I'm looking at what we had originally, you know, proposed, which is for sale. And now I see twenty-five rental units. Of course, we still have to approve it. But I hope we're not even considering that as an option number one. I also see it's twenty-five rental units and twenty-three parking stalls. So does that mean that we're not going to have enough for two cars per rental unit? And number three, I thought this was something that's going to be taken care of in expeditions. And I'm looking at the timeline. And so that means that this construction is going to be going on until twenty-twenty. And it's already been held for a year, I believe. And so I don't know if other councilors have concern. But this is going to be making the long time under construction. And they're literally scratching the original proposal to redo the whole thing. So I really want to see this as soon as possible and see what they're proposing. Because twenty-five rental units or a park plaza for our community is too unacceptable. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor, at this point.
I still feel that this project is creating basically a nightmare. The traffic alone is so unbelievable in that Ramona area. When the Rome project was built originally, and I'm going to use Rome as an example, we were told that that was, it's going to be for a transit oriented community. But yet everybody has cars there. So that means that's about a hundred cars or seventy cars if the Rome project alone has. Here, you've got rental units as well. And that might be another fifty, sixty cars in that particular intersection. I don't know, do you drive Ramona on a Friday?
Pretty bad.
So, and the train, you know, now the train, we've got to take that into consideration. There's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot of problems with the traffic that I see. I mean, I live up the street and I have a terrible time getting out in the morning and especially in the evening, I would say practically every day. So I don't see how we could possibly put a type, that type of building or development right there in the center of Baldwin Park when we're doing all these other things as well. The other one is that who are we attracting to these? At first, it was going to be sale units and now they're rental units. I don't think we're attracting people from Baldwin Park. We're bringing in people from outside to rent some of these or to be able to live in these. And that worries me. Because what's happening to the residents in Baldwin Park that need housing? So there's a lot of issues that I would like to see. There's been no community outreach. I've asked a lot of the neighbors, I've asked Pastor Rios at her church. She's never heard when I told her that there were changes. She has said she has never even met the man. So there's a lot of issues. And I could go on and on, but I promised you that I wasn't going to talk a lot, so.
It's all right, we're doing good, you guys.
Mayor, would I just, that's one. I mean, a lot of questions that we, that I had asked, I have some questions. But the city manager did say he's going to bring it back next week. So the developer will be here and he'll answer all of our questions. I know that, just for your staff and the property staff, there's been a lot of exchange back and forth, information and so forth. So I would give that's the pieces of information. I would like for our staff to come back and have the developer come back, add the city manager recommended, do a study session, to just update us on where they're at with this whole project. I think they've been pretty much since they were approved to do a project. And then I just want to get sense of where these are at. So I'm kind of waiting on that. But let's bring it all back and find out what exactly is going on and get from the developer to issue.
I would like to add to your, to your, and I think the study session is great. However, I still would like there to be community outreach. I would like the residents to be able to, or the surrounding businesses to be able to be available or be there at this particular meeting so that we can hear their concerns.
Those who will also come back and I can answer for them. Those that have come back here, I mean, those who are accommodations have had any.
All right, yes, yes, Vice Mayor, Susan Rubio.
Well, another concern was that at the time, I wanted to create a plaza, a civic plaza for our community, you know, the selling point, was that we had a lot of money and we didn't have to go finance it. These were going to be done right away. And I remember discussing breaking up a project and dragging it out for thirty-four years. If you have the money, then why aren't you doing it right away? We're going to get this now vacant for that long and under construction. So I'm not comfortable with these phases that they're proposing either. If you have the money, which is the selling point at the time, you got the money, you didn't have to go seek out funding. But why are we doing this in phases? You know, the, the individual project kind of got built right away in the same year. So why are we dragging this up for four years here? It has the money or it doesn't. But I think we need to move forward. And possibly, I mean, I don't see a lot of changes to the bill. So I don't mind that one. But I think we need to reconsider the park plaza for our community. It continues to be park poor, and I think that's something that's showing for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember, that's a good question.
Again, those questions can be posed to the developer and obviously staff or anyone else has those answers. I think they're important questions that should be asked. Again, I didn't support the park in front of the city hall because we have, we have a park, we're a park right across the street. So I didn't support it at the time, council. There was no funding for the levels, so that was one of the issues that we had with that. But number one, this one partly is, we just need to go up with the developer and have them present in front of the city council. And we can ask them all these questions and find out what the schedule is, as long as it is. And so, hey, that's it. Mayor, just, do we have a motion for that meeting? Or the city manager will just accept it?
We can bring that back, yes.
Who wants to do that?
Bring it up at the next council meeting.
Study session, study session? Do you have a time and a question?
It could be a separate meeting or it could be at the next.
A separate meeting, please.
I would prefer a study session where we have all the time. Maybe seven o'clock earlier about five o'clock. And then it's going to last until we redo this project. And you deliver it later. So if you have a five, possibly, see what council will make the end of the study session. Thank you.
All right, so at this point, we have another, we'll skip Councilman Monica Garcia because she's requested on last, so we'll just bring that one back. All right, so at this point, I will make a motion for chairman of the city council. Hello?
I'll second, I'm sorry.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. At this point, I'd like to open up the finance authority. And the item that we have is the same calendar. I'll go ahead and move for approval.
I'll second, I agree.
Seconded by Vice Mayor, any objections? See none, so move. At this point, I'd like to move for chairman.
I have a comment.
Yes, absolutely.
I really need to discuss this, this system. I think we've been doing like these microphones for a while. So we need to figure out whether we're going to invest in the system because, you know, given our custom that the microphone's back and forth, it makes a lot of noise. I think we ought to have microphones for a long time. And I think it's time to be fixing all these for our residents. Some of the residents are complaining that they can't hear at home. You know, because sometimes our, you know, speakers don't want to get close enough. But can we discuss maybe setting budgets by the end of the next meeting? Put it down, give it a look, please.
Yes, and I apologize. We thought we had the system fixed a couple of times, but there was issues that could not be repaired. So we're looking right now at getting prices to repair the system firmly. I believe it was sixty, eighty thousand dollars. So we're bringing that back. Yeah, it would seem it's going to involve fully rewiring and replacing the entire system.
But so can I add sixty-eight thousand dollars? And you have a willing spend on a grade that's one day that we're not going to spend in city hall around our residents. So I think we should reconsider the grade over paying microphones that are, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I would, just to grab a word for our community here, a good community experience here. You look at this, I don't know if you can, speaker system, sorry, I'm sorry.
Hey, why not? Why not? Why not? That's a, that's a good proposal. All right, so at this point, I will move for chairman of the finance authority. Second, any objections? See none, so move. At this point, I'd like to open up the housing authority. And I'd like to move for consent calendar, which is items one and two. That is my motion. Second, any objections? See none, so move. At this point, I'd like to move for chairman of the city council.
Second.
Any objections? See none, leave up Baldwin Park, good evening.